I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of March 28th, 2018. The printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is open at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action is final on the following agenda items. Number 1.2, Special Permit 1-8-0-0-9, and number 5.1, County Preliminary plat number 1-8-0-0-1. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held March 14th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved. Finnegan.
Second. Hove.
Jerry?
Okay. Becky S?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Abstain.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there's anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item in the, on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 1-8-0-0-7. To review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan for the proposed Raymond Brothers Redevelopment Project, generally located at 801 O Street. The project involves the redevelopment and rehabilitation of the existing four-story Raymond Brothers Building, which is expected to include approximately 9,500 square feet of commercial use on the first floor and approximately 28,500 square feet of residential on the upper three floors. The Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan area is generally bounded by Salt Creek Interstate 180, R Street on the north, and 17th Street on the east, G Street on the south, and Salt Creek, 2nd Street, and Sun Valley Boulevard on the west. Item 1.2 is Special Permit Number 1-8-0-0-9 to allow the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises on property generally located at 5560 South 48th Street. This is final action on this special permit unless appealed to the city clerk, or city clerk or council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these agenda items?
I don't see any.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that interest.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Washington.
Second.
Got Finnegan? Oh, Edgerton, okay.
There were four of us, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, this is for the approval of the consent agenda. Becky S?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. You will then have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, there's three associated items. I'll be calling those together for public hearing. First one is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 1-8-0-0-1 to revise the future land use map designations in the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan for Commercial and Residential Urban Density on approximately 52 acres, more or less, generally located between Alvo Road and Humphrey Avenue on Centurion, Centurion Drive. Staff recommendation is for approval. The associated changes zone 1-8-0-0-5 from B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at Centurion Drive and Humphrey Avenue. Staff recommendation is for approval. And the associated special permit number 04004B to expand the Bridge, or the Stone Bridge Creek Community Unit Plan by approximately 36 acres for 121 new dwelling units on property generally located at Centurion Drive and Humphrey Avenue. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any. Rachel?
Rachel Jones, planning staff. So these are three related items for the expansion of the Stone Bridge Creek Community Unit Plan, and the site is generally located west of 27th Street and north of Interstate 80. So, this is Alvo Road, Centurion Drive, and Humphrey Avenue extends this way. First, we have an amendment proposed to the future land uses. This area outlined here is designated for commercial land uses and would change to residential. And then we have this area to the north currently designated for future residential that would change to future commercial. We do have industrial zoning adjacent to the proposed residential here, and normally city policy has been not to create new residential zoning within 300 feet of industrial, but in this case, this I-3 use permit has a restriction on storage of hazardous materials within 300 feet of a house, so that alleviates that particular concern, and it does not create a really significant new restriction on the industrial property today. Next application is a change of zone from B2 to R3, west of Centurion and north of Humphrey. And then our third application is the CUP amendment, which shows a residential layout for the area within the change of zone, and then the area south of Humphrey Avenue that's already residentially zoned. Here is the proposed layout for the site. They are showing a new north-south street here at Serpentine Drive, and then a layout to the south closely matches what's already approved there, and then two cul-de-sac areas to the north. 121 new units are proposed. These would be single-family detached and single-family attached units. Public Works is requiring some form of traffic calming be added on Humphrey Avenue. Because it is such a straight street, it will be prone to fast-moving traffic, even though there will be some residential driveways taking access to it. And so I believe Public Works and the developer have settled on two traffic calming measures. The first is narrowing of the street at the future trail crossing in the drainage way to the west, so they're proposing adding a median there to help facilitate a safer And then also the addition of a traffic circle at Serpentine Drive and Palladium Avenue at that intersection on Humphrey Avenue. So I would be glad to take any questions you might have.
I have a question. I'm trying to, I'm looking at the map you just put up. So Serpentine and Palladium intersect?
Yes, so...
Yes, if you could show me on that map, please.
Would be added right here.
Thank you.
For the traffic circle, and then the, the median would be added approximately here. There's a future trail that runs north-south in that drainage area.
So the trail's just off that map?
It's just off the map to the west.
Okay. And that's the Stone Bridge Trail, is that right?
I...
That's where the crossing is?
That's where the crossing is, mhm.
And show me again, please, where the roundabout will be. Right there.
Right here.
Right there, okay.
Yeah, this is Centurion, which exists. This street is, is the new street they'd be proposing.
There was some talk about waivers of pedestrian access on a couple of different blocks. One, could you point out those blocks, please?
Yeah. Block three, and then block four. So staff is supporting the waiver in this block because of the nature of the way the streets are aligned, you know, will facilitate pretty well pedestrian access up to the commercial area. But on block three, we're requesting that they add a pedestrian easement for accessing to the open space that is going to surround the development.
And...
And there's also an area, this, in this area, that's shown as if a neighborhood park slash common space, so it would facilitate their use of that as well.
It was a little hard to read the map. Can you tell me, is the walkway between lot 26 and 25, or is it...
Where would it be added?
Yes, where would it be added?
Um...
I couldn't tell if I was looking at a pedestrian walkway or an easement, a utility easement.
Okay, let me just check here. Yes, 25 and 26, block three, is right here.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that was mentioned in the report was that this is a primary entryway corridor. Can you refresh my memory as to what that means?
Um, let's see. So the pedestrian easements between lots 18 and 19, my apologies. Which are right here. This is, appears to be a drainage easement that'll go in this location, sorry about that. Um, right, so primary entryway corridors, we talk about those in the comprehensive plan as being important for aesthetics, and being a primary entryway corridor.
Into the city.
Into the city. And then we have secondary corridors that I think are more internal to those, and so, you know, we don't really have any specific regulations in place for those that I'm aware of, but just in general, we, you know, we try to keep in mind any type of screening of industrial uses, outdoor storage, things like that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Rachel? Londa, are you, you're good right now?
No, I'm gonna ask the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Brad Marshall, I'm with Olson Associates at 601 P Street, Suite 200, excuse me, Suite 200. I am here on behalf of the applicant, which is Stone Bridge Creek LLC. Lincoln Federal took on ownership of this property about the time of the recession and has been developing mostly lots that had been developed in the Stone Bridge Creek area. Little infrastructure has been put in, and, and lots are selling solely, but inventory is dwindling down at this time. The main corridor, or the main piece is south of Humphrey here, had previously been approved as a CUP, Stone Bridge Creek Villas. It were a different market, smaller component of residential housing, and we have come forward as part of the CUP to basically do with, go away with that CUP and overlap it with the larger CUP, and it just expand the, the one that Stone Bridge Creek exists today. The single-family housing has been added to, to that area, and then there's a strong market for townhome attached, single-family, if you will, in the other areas of the development, so we have added that along Serpentine and the, the short substrate, stub streets of Casper and Tiger Iron Circle. We have been working with Public Works. Humphrey is a, a wide street. It is classified as a, a local street, but it's 38, 39, it's basically three lanes wide. And so we have been working with Public Works staff to come up with ways to help slow down traffic, because that will be a main street that will connect to Alvo, even through that industrial area someday. So they have come up with some unique approaches, adding some of those traffic circles in a built condition, which we've been working with, and we have come to an agreement how that will work, as well as the, the splitter island, if you will, for the trails that will be in the future. But it's very similar, if you are familiar with South 32nd Street, right in front of, on the east side of South Point, very, very similar, where a trail crossing comes across a very wide road, and has been done, and appears to be working very successfully. The, the comp plan amendment, I'll speak about that really quickly. We have kind of moved the residential down to the south end, the commercial towards the industrial piece. There was some concern as Gary Cook, Cook Investments, does own the one lot that, I don't have a good aerial here, but he does own a, he does own one of the lots that is down there, and if you're driving 27th and I-80, you see this big massive building down there, and it sits in this vicinity. So we have been in contact with Gary, Leo Schumacher of Lincoln Federal, and met with Gary about our intents, and I don't want to speak on his behalf, but I think what I heard as far as his concern was, they do have industrial-type uses, they want to protect their industrial zoning, and they have about a dozen or, or more semi-trucks that come down. So the corridor of Centurion and the future corridor Humphrey to his property is very important, and so we assured him that we weren't making a change of Centurion or Alvo east of Centurion, which would basically be the route for his trucks. And so we, Public Works actually gave us the choice of, of that intersection or the Serpentine intersection that we showed around circle now, and so I'll show that on the map here. This may be better. So trucks coming down Centurion basically turn left to get to the property of Cook Investments, and so the traffic circle being offset about a half-block or so should not impact any, any work that he's doing.
Was that where the cars are?
Yes.
Okay. I got it. I have the picture.
That is, that is it. He's, I've never been there, but I've, I've heard, it's kind of a car museum there. So I, I think we've addressed most of his concerns as they've come about, so with that, that is basically everything I have, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I will mention, there was the drainage easement that was pointed out, that will become an outlaw now, that's kind of a new standard that they're producing or requesting, so we will be modifying that minorly, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do. In the agency review report, there were a couple of things, and I wanted to know how you had addressed, or if you had already addressed, the issues raised by LES for additional easement?
Yes, we have sent over the plan and the grading, the transmission lines, they're very careful about what happens in those corridors. We are not proposing dramatic changes, if much of anything, in those corridors, so they have reviewed and kind of given their blessing that we aren't changing anything that would impact the, the transmission lines there. So then they've kind of follow up as to, you know, standards that we may be able to provide in those, such as landscaping, but low-lying trees and ornamentals and so forth, and we'll attach that basically to the guidelines for the development and the HOA.
Okay. And then Parks and Rec raised some issues about slope drainage.
Right, and that was basically off the end of Tiger Circle. The, the trail will come down along the western edge of the development, in which we have made some modifications to help, well, not impact it, let's put it that way. I'll mention at the end of those circles, there was concern, because they are a place of vehicle turning and turning around, that we've been working with Rachel to come up with a component of landscape screening at the end of those circles, so that visual obstruction to the trail will be provided, as well as to the existing residences at the end of Jasper.
Okay. And then one last question. I got a little twisted in the first two parts of this presentation, not in the presentation itself, Rachel, but in the materials, and I was curious if you had considered asking for rezoning on the entire commercial area there on the southern end, or the southwestern end. You've, it looks like you're, though the land use has changed to residential, you're still holding it out as B2?
Okay, so on the south, so this is the, this is the existing map.
Right.
And we are basically taking this area and retaining, and this, this residential would be then changed to commercial, is that the area that you're...
No, in the area that you're looking to develop next.
Yes.
You have a 10-acre sized parcel that, that you've shown, that you're moving from commercial to residential, but the other half, so you're really close there. You didn't ask for a rezoning of that.
That is part of what is being changed to residential as part of the, the component. So this is the map of, of what is being proposed. We had, pre-application, met with Planning Department about the comp plan change, and the thought was with this not, or if this were to remain, it would be kind of a pocket of residential, if you will. Having this in there, if this were to stay commercial, then you'd have a pocket of residential. The thought is, and I think Rachel touched upon this, the setback requirement to the industrial land, the 300-foot, already existed from this development to the west, or to the east, excuse me, it's odd, north-northeast.
You're right.
But it, it extended this way, and then this residential has a setback. So this was a, if you will, a dead area that could possibly have some, but we looked at it, and it overlapped such that there was very sliver of piece of, of industrial area that would not be in that setback. So there is not a major impact, or even much of an impact, to the industrial property to ask for the residential zoning. The way we have it planned is to push the commercial towards more of the collector, the arterial roadway of Alvo, and to keep that to the, and away from the residential, if you will. And this piece here, thought was, although we're not coming in quite yet, but maybe some type of buffer residential use, such as multifamily in the future.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
One, just one question. Are you removing all the speed bumps and instead doing the narrowing of the street and the traffic circle, or are you keeping some of the speed bumps?
We are not modifying Humphrey, except for what we're proposing in those particular areas. So I'm not sure exactly if there are anything else out there to, to calm the traffic currently. Is, are you suggesting like there's actual like...
I, but I, you were suggesting speed bumps in the orig, that was your original suggestion, right?
We originally were just gonna, the, we called them bumpouts.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I misunderstood what you meant.
So we actually would, and I think they're actually shown on this plan, where you just take the curbs and you extend them towards the center of the street.
Okay, yeah, I misunderstood what you meant.
So as we worked with Mark, Mark Lucha Harms, he, we came up with the traffic, the traffic circle here, and then the option with that one, and bumping the curbs, the idea is that you're shortening the length of travel for your pedestrians. We were, that was the original suggestion, and then we had some concerns about drainage and keeping that, and bypassing the new bumpout pieces. So like I said, we actually assisted in the design on the South 32nd Street crossing, and it's working well, so we are suggesting that here as well. So that won't impact the drainage as a street, everything goes out to the outside, and therefore should not have any difficulties with implementing that.
Okay, so keeping the original design and adding the two features that...
The two features that Rachel had put up here is what we have come to an agreement on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? We have any testimony in support for any one of these three applications? So come on forward, yeah.
Good afternoon. David Strom, 7304 North 19th Street, and I just need to state that I don't represent any military organization while I'm here, I'm just taking a break from work. So I speak as a community member and a resident. I'm in support, but I also have some opposition too, so I can go back and wait for that opposition port. I actually support the movement to, to take the commercial out of this area and make it more of a residential area. My opposition would be in the, the site plan. I'm not necessarily opposed to density, but I can speak to that later on. But I am in approval for switching this to residential use, as my, my property butts up right, right, right against that, so obviously for resale purposes and everything like that, I'd prefer houses than... So if, just so you can have a layout where I'm speaking to, so I am right here, I'm in slot nine, I believe, and so this would directly impact my, my home, and so I'm in support of that. Now, I don't know if you want to hear my opposition at this time, or...
Let's knock it out.
Okay. So my opposition to the, the site plan is, I have a better, so right behi- Okay. Uh, so my opposition to the, the site plan is I have a better, so right behind my house, if you look at the grading, and it goes back to, it sounds like there's some grading issues in there. And it's because it kind of sits on a, on a big hill. My house actually overlooks most of Lincoln and then it slopes down towards the creek. So I think that's why we're running into some grading issues that the, the Parks Department brought up and things like that. So if you look here, uh, let me get my bearing here, sorry. So this would be my built home right here. Uh, and then this little line of dashes, uh, that goes down is the current grade. So if you think of a flat property, it slopes down and then there's my grade. Uh, it's not very high, maybe two, three steps, but there is a grade there. What happens a lot of times is this flat area takes most of the water, but anything up from the street above all flows down this little, uh, corridor and eventually makes its way to about me and my neighbor's home and it eventually flows into the street. So I get a lot of water runoff during that time. My fear is, is with this grading, you can see here they're, they're, and I'm assuming this is what they're proposing, is they're gonna pull that grading back so that it's, it's like almost a split level. You can have kind of a walkout basement. It's kind of what it looks to me. But what's gonna happen is it's gonna create this pool of additional water flow that's gonna come straight into all of these houses right here. Um, and I already have a saturated backyard when it rains and it dries out okay because I don't have that continuous flow of water. My fear is the way it's plotted now with people running their sprinklers during the summer plus rain, it, it's never gonna have that opportunity to dry out, uh, because of the way they're doing that grading. And then you're adding input, uh, concrete in houses and it's just gonna add to the overflow of that, that water. And I speak on probably behalf of a lot of my neighbors that didn't come because we're all gonna receive that water overflow. So that's one of my oppositions, uh, to the current site plan as it exists. The other one is, is, uh, you can go back and look at the history of our neighborhood. Since the recession, when, uh, rebolt, construction went out of business and Federal Lincoln took over, they've allowed the building of, uh, duplexes within our, our estate. Um, it wasn't designed that way. We have a lot of odd duplexes in the middle of single family homes. Um, and it, and, and they're rentals, most of them. Uh, you can actually go back, uh, we worked with LPD a lot during the last, I don't know, decade, uh, because of the amount of, uh, college rentals that we have in this neighborhood. Uh, there's no permanency to that, so they don't invest in that. And the, the landlords that we have dealt with don't have any inclination to, to improve those properties. And so, uh, this directly again impacts me. The cul-de-sac that already exists right here with duplexes is exactly that. It's just full of, uh, college kids. And you can pull that up through LPD and I'm sure they can pack those. My concern is, is that on the backside of where they're proposing, um, additional duplexes. And so my question is, are there going to be rentals only adding to the saturation of that area to begin with? And, and, and again, I'm not against density. I'm in den, I'm, I'm, I'm for balance. And we have not seen that balance, uh, on this portion of, uh, Stonebridge. Um, and I don't want that unbalanced to continue. So, uh, as we go forward, I would like the, the commission to think about that when it comes to the site planning or some kind of consideration that these will be homeowner, uh, kind of, uh, properties and not sold as rentals. I don't know, there's, there's not a lot of control in some of that, but, uh, but that is, I think, are probably our main concern. Are those two things, especially the density in which we're creating, uh, with the problems that already exist there. So, thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is that your property on that map?
Yeah, so I'm right, right there in the corner. So there's a street runs right here. And you have another street and then you have a cul-de-sac that goes right here. Um, it, and.
The sack is where the, the duplexes are?
Yeah, they're all duplexes in here. Now, I have, uh, a slim lot as well. I live on a half lot, uh, but it's a single family home. So, you know, there's grass in between. And, and I'm all for that kind of density in this area. And I'm not necessarily opposed to townhomes as, as either, if they're well-built and they're homeownered and people care for them. My concern is, is we already have an entire cul-de-sac of rentals. Uh, my, my concern would be if these continue to be built as townhomes, then we're only adding to that complexity of chaos that already exists in the balance of that neighborhood. Uh, and, and a lot of that is on this side of the neighborhood. It's not, but you can find it throughout the Stonebridge Creek on this north side of Humphrey. So Lincoln Federal, I think, has done better in the, in the, in the recent times and not allowing that kind of trend to continue. But it is a concern of our neighborhood. Uh, we have changed our covenances to try to avoid things like that in the future. Um, I used to sit on the coven tree, or the, the board and I've had to sue two landlords for issues, not seeding or sodding their yard, only adding to drainage issues that we already have within this neighborhood. So the, those are some, some concerns with me, especially with the grade as, as they're proposing, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony in support for any of these three applications?
Hello, excuse me. I'm Matt Dagaford. I am currently the HOA, excuse me, the HOA president for Stonebridge Creek Homeware Association. I'm gonna expand a little bit on what this gentleman had to say. I'm also in, I live at seventy-one twenty North Steamboat Drive. Currently also in support of the change from commercial residential for this area. But I also share his concerns as far as the way the site map is laid out. Um, one of the big concerns, big issues that our HOA has had is with these rental properties. For instance, last summer, I personally wrote one hundred violation notices to, to different properties around the neighborhood. Ninety of those violations going to rental properties. So out of the seven hundred-ish properties within our current HOA, approximately a hundred and fifty of those are rental properties right now. So expanding the number of townhomes that are currently available within the HOA is a big concern of ours. They just become areas for college kids to live in. Again, not opposed to college kids living in rental houses, but they're just not taken care of by the landlords. So we've gone back and forth, lots of discussions with different property owners in the area last year. We made some improvements with some things, but, but it just, it's only gonna get worse if we continue to let more townhomes and duplexes get, go into our area instead of just a normal, single-family, you know, standalone home. Um, just for instance, this is one area along Whitewater off of Fourteenth and Pennsylvania. Um, you can see the amount of traffic that is parked along the street there. So it just, the other problem that we run into is these landlords over-renting to, to tenants, which is incredibly difficult for an HOA to police. So you have, you know, four to five people living in a townhome. They have a couple buddies or a girlfriend or boyfriend over and all of a sudden you got six or seven vehicles for one resident. So you can see, this is an aerial view of Whitewater. Fourteenth Street being over in this area. There's just, you can see there's nowhere to park, for one thing. So that street completely fills up with cars along here. They park in the grass over here. They park all along this street where these are, you know, fam, people trying to raise families. He had mentioned about the cul-de-sacs being a, a concern. You can see this is the way people park in these cul-de-sacs. This is, this is the street that he was referring to. These are all townhouses up and down here. And you can see how this becomes an enormous parking issue. And there's an elderly lady that lives over in this area over here. We met with her last summer. She was told when she was, she was the first person to purchase one of those townhomes, that that area was supposed to be like a sixty-plus, you know, area for townhomes, retirement, you know, uh, people retiring. And it's all college kids through there. So you can imagine her surprise and the things that she has witnessed. Again, this, I'm just gonna show you more pictures to, so this is again down Whitewater Lane. The amount of traffic, and this is, this is this morning. So this is looking up the street that he was referring to where that cul-de-sac is, where people are parked around it. One thing that, I mean, I guess I just can't stress enough how opposed we are to, to having some of those lots zoned or set aside for duplexes. So anything we can do to eliminate that and just change them to just single homes, you know, owner occupied, we would definitely encourage. So that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Any questions for him? Thank you for coming down.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any to other testimony in support? Okay, we'll go ahead and switch to testimony in opposition. Any testimony in opposition for these three applications? Come on up.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Gary Cook. I'm, uh, I'm our family's owner of the, bear with me. Uh, the owner of the industrial ground out there, Cook Investment Partners. I'm not necessarily opposed to development out there. After all, I have to give them credit, that land has been set in our industrial land. We bought and developed out there in nine, two thousand four and two thousand five, so it's been set and quite empty. My only concern, and I believe that with the phone calls I've made, I've gotten some people paying attention to it. It's the access in there for, into an industrial property. We have anywhere from ten to twenty fifty-three foot semis every day coming in there. There is no access to our property except coming up Alvo Road, you know, and around and down Centurion and turning left onto Humphrey. And all the relationship, everything in here was changing. And the access at Humphrey and the access at Centurion. It just kept repeating it and repeating it, repeating it. I was just trying to understand that we've got to be able to get trucks in and out of there. It is an industrial property and has been zoned that way ever since it was originally developed. And I'm hearing some things that are changed now. People were talking about doing some flat roundabouts and everything. Right now you cannot come from Fourteenth Street up Humphrey and even get to our property. There's not enough room to go through there with semis. So I believe we are getting some adjustment now to some of that, so bear with me. My concern was just mostly having access to our property. And if it gets developed across the street real heavily, still not gonna be able to turn in there without some signs or something that says, "No parking on this side." So bear with me. Thank you very much. Anybody got any questions?
The, um, I believe the testimony of the applicant earlier, what, um, talked a little bit about ensuring that access. In your mind then, does that, um, does that, I don't wanna say solve the problem, but does that address your, your major concerns or are there others?
I haven't seen the details on it. I talked to Brad a little bit about it. Um, I'm having, I'm having some trouble with my computer too. I can't get it to span the drawings out. I'm gonna have to talk and get some from Brad. But everyone seems to be addressing it, so that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying anything negative about it. I just haven't seen a real detail.
Got it.
As long as we can get semis around there. The sign's always knocked down. There's an island there right now. It's knocked down all the time already. And then trying to figure out if we're gonna be able to, you know, the minute you get some, uh, you know, some density, they're gonna have people starting to park along the street on Centurion too. You know that, so.
And, and those semis, when they access your property, it come, it is true that it comes from Alvo, you know, turning onto Centurion then and going south from that.
That's the only way it can go.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, as it exists today.
Correct.
Thank you very much for your time.
So it helped.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So it helps you having that, uh, new roundabout they're gonna put in offset from, you know, it's, it's further to the, I don't.
Oh, those dimensions are a son of a gun because the interstate's at an angle and it always makes you feel like you're sitting the wrong direction out there.
So it's, it's kind of offset from that Centurion and Humphrey, um, intersection so that the semis won't have to make that roundabout.
Well, there's not really a roundabout for them to make there. There's a corner right now. And if that roundabout down there, I'm sure it'll pull some of the, you know, the residential traffic off from it. But like I said, right now, a straight shot from Fourteenth Street, you can't make it quarter of our property. Cause you got a roundabout down there already that not big enough for a semi to go around. So I just haven't seen all the detailed drawings yet. I just always wanted to make sure that we understood that we've got to be able to get industrial vehicles around that corner now. And it's tighter than a son of a gun already. And if it was just marked so people couldn't do it, that's fine too, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition? Okay, staff questions? I know I have a few.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, jumping back to what Commissioner Washington brought up, um, the piece that, um, will remain B two zoning. I, I guess staff is, it's kind of creating a bit of a hodgepodge of R three, B two, I one, what have you in, in a pretty small area. But I'm assuming that you're supportive of this.
Right, we're supportive. Um, you know, the way it's shown now, this area has a mix of uses as well. So that's kind of always the idea out here was that these collectors would serve different types of uses. And so, you know, like you mentioned, the change of zone only covers, covers a portion of the proposed new residential, but when we looked at it, we looked at it overall as a general pattern and, um, found no reason to oppose it.
Okay. Um, and then the Humphrey Avenue as it, uh, comes to an end at, at Mr. Cook's, uh, place right now. How does that finish out? Um, where, where does Humphrey eventually go, Rachel?
Um, so right now Humphrey ends partway up to the north there. But, um, conceptually, the intention is that it will continue and then connect up to Alvo one day in the future. Yeah.
Okay. That is all I have at this point.
That would be, you know, an additional second route, but that's in the future.
Sure, sure.
Maya?
Once this leaves our hands, what are the avenues for, um, Cook Investment Partners to resolve this uh, to their satisfaction? Would, would it just be in talks with the applicant or appearing before city council and stating their concerns? So what, what's the avenue to solve it to the best variability?
Yeah. Well, I think it's all of the above. Um, I know that, uh, he's been in touch, uh, Mr. Cook has been in touch with Public Works and with the applicant. And certainly he's welcome to speak at city council as well on some of these items. So, I mean, I know Public Works is aware of, of his concerns and should be considering them.
And, and, sorry, uh, you, you don't have any concerns with the level of traffic uh, as it relates to residential and future complaints about semis and, and kids and?
Well, in, um, you know, I think maybe Brad can speak to some of this a little bit better than I can. So as their site plan is shown, and there's lots backing up to Centurion, I don't know that those lots will necessarily take access to it. They're not prohibited from, from doing so. You know, Humphrey and Centurion are very wide in this area. And certainly there should be plenty of width. It's not changing here.
Will there be parking on that road, on Humphrey?
Uh, you know, I think probably Public Works can speak to that better than I can as far as whether public, uh, parking would be prohibited, if that's something we would talk about.
But the way the site map is drawn, the homes are long, send, Centurion would face the other direction. That would be the back of the lot. Is that?
Um, so even though Centurion and Humphrey are both local streets in our system, uh, like Brad mentioned, they're very wide, wider than your typical residential local street because they also were designed to serve commercial and industrial users, I'm guessing. And, and so, you know, that's just the reality of what's out there at the moment.
I'd like to ask a, a couple more questions in the same vein there along Centurion. So they've asked, for those are double frontage lots.
They're double frontage lots.
And you just mentioned a moment ago that they don't, that there's no prohibition of people who move into those lots. Um, they're not prohibited from, um, ga- gaining access from Centurion.
Right.
And I'd like to know how many, is there a portion of those lots that once it's maxed out? I mean, seven, eight access points to Centurion, or can they all have an access to Centurion? And has that been factored into traffic? And how that intersects with truck traffic going, then turning onto Humphrey's?
Well, so because of the fact that they're local streets in the system, access management policy wouldn't prevent people from being able to take driveways to it. And, and that's not something that's in our conditions of approval as they stand now. At the time of final plat, we, you know, it's possible to put such a restriction in place as far as direct access to which streets.
I'm just thinking back maybe a month, month and a half ago, when we were talking about a proposal in North Lincoln and there was, and I'm not sure what industrial it had, what the zoning was, but I, I think it might have been an, an I one as well. And we were talking about the amount of truck traffic in that neighborhood and we were looking at approving a new daycare in a lightly used abandoned church building and neighbors came forward and said, there's a lot of truck traffic and it's a problem. And I, I hesitate to jump on board to create another situation that in fifteen years or ten years is gonna look a lot like the situation in North Lincoln in that area. So I'm just curious, when you have the double frontage, is there, and that seems to be part of this approval on the double frontage lots. And I'm listening to Mr. Cook and wondering how we resolve that on that traffic issue. And then I think there's a sort of a use in traffic issue on the other side of the development.
Well, in terms of the taking of access, I mean, that's something that could be added as a condition to this. I guess I would venture that. You know, I guess primarily, as I said earlier, the land uses, location of the future land uses is changing with this Compline Amendment, but you know, it was always gonna, these streets were always gonna have a mix of uses because the industrial was already there and you were gonna have residential traffic going up and down those streets in addition to commercial. So in that sense, it's really not a departure from what is already in place. If you're looking at the big picture.
With regard to the three things that are in front of us today, the third is the special permit, and that's where we have this, the layout that's in front of us. But we're not at the point where we're looking at the final plat of these, of this area. Is that correct?
Right. We're not, but if, you know, the CUP, Community Unit Plan, is acting as the preliminary plat for this area, so.
Right, right, this is, got it.
This would be the place to add restrictions like that, just because this community unit plan will dictate how the land is subdivided.
And final plat approval will be just done by Director Carey.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone from Public Works here? I have parking questions that are kind of related to this, but not really. When they're showing us those pictures of the cul-de-sacs and people are parking around the cul-de-sac like that, is that acceptable?
That is not legal parking. They could be ticked if they're parking in the center of the cul-de-sac.
So they could report that and?
As, as I understand, that's not a legal parking situation.
Okay. I'm wondering too, and I don't know if you'll be able to say, how would, how would Public Works feel about limiting the access to Centurion, you know, from those double frontage lots?
We wouldn't have any problem with that. It's, I guess, up to the owner whether or not they want to, I guess, argue that issue or not.
Okay. And parking along Centurion, is that contemplated that that would be restricted or not?
Public Works or the city would have the right to restrict parking at any time they've deemed that it was unsafe or causing congestion of any kind. Requiring the access on Serpentine would not eliminate parking on Centurion.
Sure, sure. Those are two separate kind of issues. Would you also be the, do you have questions about parking?
No, I'm moving on from parking, so go ahead.
Do you, would you also be the one to talk about grading, or is that gonna be?
I think the applicant should talk about that, and Watershed would probably be more
Okay.
appropriate discussion with that one.
Maya?
In, in your opinion, does the fact that this is, we're changing the land use and we're farther out in the process than in the application that Sandra referenced with the daycare, where there were semis going through the neighborhood and in this, in this particular situation, the fact that we're, everybody kind of knows what they're getting into and that that is the situation before you maybe choose to locate there, or does that alleviate any concern you would have out of safety for the people who live there?
I think in many cases, the concern comes after the people are there. I mean, that's just human nature. I think this is quite different in that this is a much more direct route to the industrial site and it's a wider road. The road we're dealing with on that daycare was, had driveways up and down it all through and was quite a long distance to get to the industrial site in there.
So sort of as it plays out, the route is the most, it's obviously never ideal to have semis going near residential, but in terms of what we have, would you say it's sort of the ideal width and, and route?
Extending Humphrey up to Alvo north of that site would be ideal, and that will happen someday. But this is, I think, an adequate site, or adequate access to that site.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have a comment. We were out Saturday and looked, I couldn't see your property. And I didn't see any trucks at that time. I stopped at, at where Humphrey ended. But I did see a lot of parked cars in places that cause, I mean, I, my thought was, oh my gosh, I'd hate to have to back out and try to avoid those. And so I do have a concern about the parking in the area that we don't have any control over who the owners sell their houses to. And so it could be additional parking issues. But it was kind of chaotic out there for that on a Saturday now. That's just a comment.
I'm also wondering going into this, if we could, around that intersection of Humphrey and Centurion, if we could just start out with a, you know, place no parking signs so those semi trucks could make that turn without having to worry about parked cars there?
I think it'd be something we could look at. I don't know if we need to preempt it, wait and see if it's a problem.
And the semis, though, would never come all the way to Humphrey, correct? They turn before that.
No.
No, they would come.
Go right here. Any other questions for Public Works right now?
No.
Any other questions for Rachel?
On the R three zoning, going back to parking with the lot widths and what's allowed on the lots, can you just go through that a little bit?
Sure, so, you know, we recently added a provision in our code that requires applicants show a minimum guest parking when they have lots that are narrower than thirty-five feet. So we've definitely identified that as something that needs to be looked at. In this case, their lots were not that narrow, so the requirement really didn't kick in.
And then what type of single-family housing is allowed on, in this type of a development?
Um, R three zoning permits single-family and single-family attached units. So they're, yeah, they're permitted by right in R three.
In the case of rentals to college students and the complaint that there were just a lot of college students per unit, what, what codes manage that? If you have a four-bedroom townhome, how many unrelated adults can live there?
So our code defines a family as no more than, containing no more than three unrelated individuals.
Okay.
Um, so, so that's how that would be regulated. In terms of zoning, a community unit plan, you know, typically doesn't get into owner versus renter. We just look at the land use itself.
So that's for neighbors or who, who are in the area, it's up to them to make a complaint that they believe there's more than, I mean, only when it's a problem, I understand. I mean, there's a lot of college housing scattered around the city, but in places where it's really concentrated and you have a lot of parking and you have other things happening.
Right, yeah, it would be a complaint basis.
It's a complaint.
Sorry. Anything else on there right now?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to manage all of.
I'm, I'm wondering, I still, is Watershed here? No?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Applicant, I hope you're ready. Any other questions for Rachel? Okay, applicant rebuttal.
Okay, let me go back to some of the site planning questions about. So we started with a B two area that was really set aside for commercial development. And so when you look at it and you transition to residential development, it's difficult because it's not kind of standard widths and everything. Obviously, you can kind of see through these sections. And so when we determined we wanted to do some type of residential, one of the thoughts are, well, the more difficult areas was certainly Serpentine. This is an area that we could take access on to Centurion, save a street, save the utilities, save a lot of money in doing that, and driveways would be taken off of there. I don't think, Lincoln Federal didn't think that was the right thing to do. And so the addition of Serpentine, the intent is so that those, those houses are directed towards Serpentine. There is no intent to have houses take access to Centurion. I would even offer up a contingency or a, a condition of approval that access is relinquished from Centurion. So that would be no issue at all. Those lots.
That include Humphrey then too?
Humphrey does take access from the single-family on the south side.
Okay.
It is, it is set up to say, take a single-family detached, act, driveways to that, to that roadway. Centurion, or excuse me, Serpentine, we looked at the size of lots and thought that was probably a more appropriate place to have more of a higher-density area, more buffer to what may be commercial to, commercial and/or multifamily in the future for those areas. So we matched or maybe even little larger lots in character to the lots that are directly to the west as we had one owner describe his home to the, to the direct west. So that was kind of the thinking, that we were matching everything there for, for those lots. Mr. Cook's testimony about his access, our approach is not to impact him. So we are not proposing to make any changes to Centurion or to Humphrey leading to his, to his business. We don't want to, we don't want to impact him, and that was another reason of not taking driveway or access, relinquishing access to Centurion. The roundabout that, I won't even call it a roundabout, it's a circle, that's what it is, that we are proposing at Serpentine, will have rollover capacity. We've run over, we've, we've kind of recognized that, well, trucks may turn that way accidentally and so forth, so that if they were to, there will be a rollover curb for those trailers to, to roll over just as a roundabout design does allow. He did mention that currently trucks are not able to access from Fourteenth Street due to this roundabout, or circle again, at Trinidad. So that, that is the one that, I just thought I'd show that to the commission as to what he was referring to as to that limiting point at that point.
Grading?
Yes. The grading is kind of in a state of when the development stopped, it would appear, I can only kind of venture to guess what transpired from then to now, but would appear that the development stopped and all the work stopped at what was developed. At the rear of their lots, there is a site, there is a slope that runs up several feet, probably the height of their fences, or maybe, maybe more in cases. The drainage aspect, this is, again, currently zoned commercial, which would have and probably contribute more runoff than residential housing. So you're gonna have lawns, you're not gonna have parking lots and so forth and as it migrates to a drainage system. I'm confident that the drainage in his rear yards, there would, that slope will actually be cut back to what he explained as a bi-level or a walkout type of home. So that slope will be cut back forty or fifty feet from his property line. And then that will drain to his property. That will continue to drain his property, but we will be decreasing the amount of area overall that is coming his direction. The, the front lawns and everything for the homes will, will be carried to Serpentine and Serpentine will carry it south to Humphrey. So it'll be carried away through streets and drainage systems. And hopefully, we can alleviate some of the drainage issues that he's currently having. We did get some additional topography and we were able to modify some. He might have been looking at some type of swale that was in the rear of those lots. The lots that are existing have a slope that the higher, the, the back of the lots are higher than the front. They drain to their street, so they drain across their lots. That's very typical where the properties to the rear of them are higher than, than those properties itself, so. I'm confident that the drainage issues will be alleviated such that we're not inundating him with any more water than, and, and it will be less than what he is receiving today. The streets and the parking and the rentals, this is under new ownership as to what had previously been developed. I did hear even a comment that Lincoln Federal is doing a better job, and I, and they hope they are doing that as well. I can say that in meeting with them, I do, have heard of issues of rentals. Their purchase agreements, and then they are carried over to Covenant, are that they are to be owner-occupied. And so I can say that confidently, and that is the intent here also. They, they have the ability to sell to certain builders and that do not comply with these because it is sometimes hard to rectify as, as a, as a developer, as a, as an HOA. And so they, they have made decisions not to, to sell lots to people that have not been abiding by those rules, so. I can sit here and hope that we've, they've done a couple of things that may address some of those issues. These lots that we, when pointing to, they're smaller, they're gonna, duplex has been thrown out townhomes. They can be, they can be single-family attached dwellings just as, as the homes are to the west as well, so. With that, I think I touched upon.
Did you say they could be duplexes?
It can be. They, they, this, these areas, they are smaller lots. They're forty-five feet wide. The minimums for this particular area are forty. And so we, we don't meet any special requirements for additional parking, but they are, they are set up so that they can be attached, single-family. are set up so that they can be attached, single-family.
Do you know what your intent is right now to put duplexes or townhomes or single-family?
It's, it's open to, to the, to the market. There's some flexibility there. I'd, I'd say that it is, it is obvious that it is tighter lots, and it would probably set up better for, for attached housing. And again, I think that's a good transition from the development to what is going to transpire to the east.
Other questions for the applicant right now? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion, and we have to do three separate motions.
So, did you say you are open to a restriction on the parking and on the driveways?
The driveway access to Centurion, we would relinquish access to, to them, from those lots, which would be block two in this CUP amendment. Lots one through sixteen, we would relinquish access. We want them to face Serpentine. The parking issue, I have to leave up to the city because they control the parking or no parking.
But then that would alleviate any issue that Mr. Cook would have as far as access, current access to his property.
Can you tell me again, block two lots, one through sixteen?
One through sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
And just one other question about the, you talked about the owner-occupied. So that is the controllable by the developer, is that their first cell would be?
They do put that in the purchase agreement. It is not always followed. And, and so then we talk about the three non-related persons, and you get this as my brother's friend of, you know, it, it is hard to enforce. I, I can't, I won't sugarcoat that, but I bet they are trying to, to enforce it.
Now, you said that that would be in the covenants, so technically, even if it was subsequent purchases, it should still apply and be owner-occupied.
That does give the ability of the HOA to try to take some action as well.
Okay, any other questions for Brad?
Thank you.
Let's hear it. Anyone feel like they want to make a motion?
This would be, okay, so it would be.
Call number first.
Yeah, separately.
Yep.
Right. This would be a motion on comprehensive plan number one eight zero zero one to revise the future land use map designations in the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan for Commercial and Residential Urban Density on approximately fifty-two acres, more or less, generally located between Alvo Road and Humphrey Avenue on Centurion Drive. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move performance, Beckyus?
Second, Washington.
Discussion. Oh, wait, do we have to vote first? All of a sudden, I forgot. Discussion.
Talking on all three, you know, I think that there, there's a lot of sense being made with the proposed changes, proposed changes here. You know, I like to see the, the B two move a little bit closer to Alvo, get it out of the Humphrey area. I think that, that makes perfect sense. I think it's important to recognize that Public Works has evaluated the issue and has said that the street can handle the traffic that is, that we know goes on today. And I think it's also important to remember that we're not looking at a finished development. Eventually, we will have connectivity from Humphrey to Alvo, which has tremendous access to the Twenty-seventh Street exit off of I eighty. I think that the use of Fourteenth Street will drop dramatically once that connectivity occurs, going through the residential neighborhood, if you will. I think most traffic will come from the northeast at that point in time. And so when this development's actually completed out, I think that we might have some short-term suffering, but some long-term success there, so I'll support the motion.
Maya?
I am also in support of this, and I'll speak on, on all three applications. I think it generally supports the comp plan and matches development, surrounding development. I think, although we've seen some issues with, with industrial, as you always do when it's close to residential, this is actually better than what we have in a lot of cases because of the existing use permit that, that have the foresight of sort of anticipating that this was going to happen and creating that barrier between hazardous chemicals and, and residential. So in a way, this has been known and has been planned for, and I'm, I'm reassured by Public Works appearing to not be terribly concerned about safety. It seems that we have adequate space and traffic movement, and it will also be known to anyone who, who moves into the neighborhood, which is always a benefit, even if some of these things, sometimes you have to live there for a while until you, you figure out what you think about it. But, and I'll also say to the agreement to be worked out between Cook Investment Partners and the applicant, it sounds like we have two parties who want to come to an agreement. So I, I have confidence that that can happen.
I'm going to support it also, and thank you, Mr. Marshall, for being willing to work with both the residents and Mr. Cook. So I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Cook, for being willing to work with them. So I will support it.
I'm going to support the motion. I think it, it's a mutual agreement. I think, appreciate the fact that the industrial park is, or the industrial is already there, and we have to keep that in mind, is it's being developed with residential around it, that it's, it's kind of unique that, that that's the case. And, and so we need to focus on the fact that the industrial is already there and, and that we can, they need to have their access as they have in the past, so, but I think this will, will make that happen.
I'll also be in support, and the hard work by all the parties seem to be going real well, and addressing the existing residents' concerns is a huge benefit there.
Tracy, if I just might add really quickly, too, to the, the homeowners in the, in the, in the area, you know, especially with some of the, the information in terms of parking that was provided, you know, we anticipate that people will be using these subdivisions in the streets and these subdivisions appropriately. So I, for one, at least, will say, I have, you know, would encourage you at all times to have cars ticketed that are parking illegally, what have you. It is part of the agreement that we're making when we say this is appropriate, that we anticipate people will be using these streets in an appropriately said manner. And I, for one, am, would be completely happy with people being ticketed if they're not using these streets appropriately.
And abiding by the covenants of the HOA. I know it means there's a lot of vigilance necessary for the homeowners and for the HOA, but I think it's an important follow-up for our decision. I'll be able to support this project probably, primarily because I like how residential and commercial are separated to some degree, and commercial is grouped in an area, and also that it's respectful of the industrial area that's already present, and I really appreciate watching the, the developer and the neighbors working with each other.
I got a couple of things. I do just want to encourage the, the existing neighbors, if we're having problems with, with over-renting, which I, I interpreted, and maybe perhaps I was wrong, of more than three unrelated persons living in a unit, and the parking, you can contact, there's several different avenues, there's, there's the website, the city website, formerly called the Action. You can click on, click on that and do it, it can be completely anonymous, they don't have to know, but I think if, if they ticketed those people on the cul-de-sac like one or two times, I think that would kind of end that problem. And there's, you can report, you know, more than three living in a unit to, using that same avenue, and it's right there on the city website. So that should help kind of those, those conditions. I am open to modifying that, I suppose it would be the special permit that we would need to modify, relinquishing that access to Centurion. I'm wondering, and you guys can let me know how you think, if we just need to limit that until there's another access, or basically until Humphrey connects up to Alvo. And I know that that's maybe adding some duplicity in there then, but then it protects the industrial park access, just so that we have it kind of in writing. I think, well, if I were Mr. Cook, I would appreciate that a lot more, having it in writing. But I support the comp plan amendment. I think it's appropriate to switch those two from residential to commercial, and I think everything else looks good. Okay, so let's call the vote on this first one.
Okay, this would be for the recommendation of approval on comprehensive plan amendment number one eight zero zero one. Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Next vote, or motion needed is for change of zone one eight zero zero five from B two business, or planned neighborhood business district to R three residential district on property generally located at Centurion Drive and Humphrey Avenue. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval.
Second, Hove.
Discussion. Call a vote.
Okay, Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, next motion needed is for special permit four zero zero four B to expand the Stonebridge Creek CUP by approximately thirty-six acres for one hundred and twenty-one new dwelling units on property generally located at Centurion Drive and Humphrey Avenue. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
So can I make a motion, since I'm the chair?
Sure.
Okay. So I'd like to amend that to relinquish access to Centurion Block Two, lots one through sixteen, until such a time as Humphrey is connected to Alvo Road.
Is that clear and?
I've got it. I need a second.
Second, Hove. Is that acceptable from your standpoint?
Discussion.
Thank you for making sure that's in writing.
I, I, I am in support of the, the special permit. I'll probably vote no as amended on the restriction to Centurion. But I am in support of the special permit.
Anyone else? Can I ask why you're voting no?
I, I think that Public Works had made their case that they feel as though the street is adequately designed to handle the traffic load, and so I don't have the same concern, I suppose, as may potentially other commissioners do.
I would probably also vote no, just because I, not because I disagree with you, but because I feel that it's a little late in the process to do this when we can't discuss it out with input from staff. I'd prefer to see it as passed on as a recommendation and discussion to city council, and have them bring it up and talk it out a little further. But I'm generally, I'll support the original application.
And I, too, would vote no, mainly because I trust the word of the people involved and that they will work it out and it will be fine. And so I'm in favor of the special permit, though.
I'm going to vote for approval. I think the applicant actually offered it, so I'm going to support it.
I'm, kind of the reason why I made the amendment is because of Mr. Cook's concern, and also because the applicant stated they were wide open and accepting of this, so I think it's appropriate. Anyone else? Jerry?
So this would be motion on the amendment to relinquish access for lots, or Block Two, lots one through sixteen onto Centurion Drive until such a time that Humphrey Avenue is extended to Alvo Road. I have a second by Hove. Beckyus?
No.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
No.
Harris?
No.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to three.
Okay.
So now we'll call the main motion as amended. Is that right? Yes.
No.
That's what we just did.
No, you just made, made the amendment.
That was just your proposed amendment. So now we need the.
I'm of approval on the main amendment.
And that was Hove?
As amended, yeah. Hove.
Second, Joy.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
No, I see none.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, moving on to public hearing items. Item five point one, and I, actually, I want to note that even though Commissioner Shear is not present today, he did declare a conflict of interest on this item. Item five point one is county preliminary plat one eight zero zero one to add two commercial lots on property generally located at one zero two zero zero South, one hundred and fifty-eighth street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the county board within fourteen days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there, are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I see none.
Afternoon, Tom Chaka, planning staff. We have here is an application for a preliminary plat for three commercial lots. It is located at the intersection of Highway Two and Highway forty-three, commonly referred to as the Bennett Corner. This is the area we're talking about. Give you some context. This in green is the property we're talking about. Here's Bennett. This is Bennett's zoning jurisdiction, so we're just a little bit north of that. The proposal is for... Yep, make sure I got that right. Highway Two up here, it's basically just three lots. There's, there's an existing Casey's Convenience Store here, so one lot is for that, existing store. A second lot here for development, and then a third lot down here. Both these are very, you know, pretty large lots. Currently, there's just a driveway here off of the highway that accesses Casey's. That will be converted to a street. It'll be a public street that will come in here and then turn to the south and access dead end here for the property to the east. So when the property in the east would develop in the future, they would extend this street. This would be a temporary cul-de-sac at this location. The applicant has asked for two waivers. One is to sidewalks, which planning supports. The way the county zoning is written, it says sidewalks are required for any commercial development. It doesn't have the language like it does for residential, where if they're over a certain size, that they're automatically waived. So being these are such large lots and not any residents nearby, the sidewalk waiver, we feel is appropriate. The second waiver is to block length. The county subdivision ordinance says that no block, no block shall be longer than thirteen twenty feet between cross streets. So you have the highway here, you have no street here, and then there's a, a street down here, Luanne. If you had a street about here, it would meet the block length waiver. So instead of saying, well, when this guy develops, we'll just make him put a street in, we, planning felt it was more equitable to say, well, put the street here on the lot line, half of it on. we, planning felt it was more equitable to say, "Well, put the street here on the lot line, half of it on your side, half on the other." We're not saying to build the street at this time. We're saying to dedicate thirty feet of right-of-way. And at such time as this lot is final platted, you would have to post a bond for the improvement, for what half the cost of the road would be. But you wouldn't build it because we don't want half of a street built. It wouldn't be built until this property would develop. The reason we're asking for the bond or some type of surety is because there's no way in the future to come back and make sure that that street gets built or that half of it if we don't have something to fall back on. If that'll take any questions.
Tom?
On Lot Three, what were you showing there, Tom? Because my picture's a little different than yours.
Okay, yes, the site plan and the original staff report is gone. This is the current, and you should have received this previously, like a week or two, couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we did. At least I did.
Well, it seems everyone else did, Tom, so...
At the same time, we amended a lot of conditions. We attached that site plan to it. So also the conditions in your staff report are not correct. There was a memo sent out on March thirteenth that amended the conditions with the revised staff, or revised site plan.
Okay. Maybe you can take other questions then, Tom, while I play catch-up.
Practically speaking, how long do you think it's gonna take before this, you know, gets developed on the right side? Yeah.
Well, typically, I would probably say it'd be a pretty long time. But usually, once one development starts, it oftentimes speeds up the process of somebody else wanting to think about, well, hey, you know, this guy's development's working and taking off, maybe, maybe I can do the same thing.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's hard to say.
In the analysis, it looks like the county, under number four, it looks like the county had two alternatives for managing a future north-south road. One was to split it, and even though you said that was the most equitable, you also had one option where the road was entirely on this property.
Yes, and I think one of our, one of the conditions is that if this lot develops into, is redeveloped into three or more lots, then we would want, the road would move from here and be more central, and then this would go away.
And so they wouldn't need the bond?
At that time, right. There was, before I forget, this just came late yesterday. I don't know, we sent an email out this morning, so some of you might have not seen it. Originally, the county engineer was asking for a traffic study. Some would be condition 1.1.70. After reviewing with state Nebraska Department of Transportation, they have, the county engineer has now deleted that condition for a traffic study. The concern at the time was, is there, is there gonna be enough traffic generated from this development to require a right-turn lane off of the highway? The state is not concerned about that at this time. They do have the right to go back years from now, and if they feel traffic warrants a right-turn lane, they can, the state can then require a right-turn lane to be built at that time.
I want to make sure that I heard that correctly, Saunders' question before. So if the road isn't along that property line, if it's completely internal to this one, two, and three lots that we're talking about now, no surety bond would be needed?
No, well, okay, let's say they, okay, first of all, the surety wouldn't be required until they put this in a final plat. If they come in final plat, say this lot and this lot, and they're not ready to develop this, they can put this in an outlot. So as long as it's in an outlot, which means they can't build on it, no surety would be required. If they come back later and amend the preliminary plat to show multiple lots here, then this road here would go away. It would be moved here, and then they would have to post a surety or build. Well, actually, in the county, you're required to build streets before a final plat's approved, but not a, not a half-street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, applicants.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunziker, appearing on behalf of the developer. As Tom said, this is a change from industrial to commercial. It was done fairly recently, and it was done with this development in mind. And generally, the conditions of approval that the staff has put forward are acceptable, except this one area of disagreement with respect to block length. I should probably tell you right now that we have just, within the last ten minutes, had people at Tim Gergen's office do a measurement of the block that we're talking about here, and it comes up to twenty-six hundred and sixteen feet, the perimeter. Divided by two is thirteen hundred and eight feet, which does not violate the block length. Regardless, I think it's overkill, even if it did violate the block length to require a half-street at the eastern edge of this property. If you look at the map, the comprehensive plan land use map, this, come up here. There we go. This intersection of Highway forty-three and Highway Two, the property we're discussing is right here. Casey's is right there. And as you can see, this, all four corners of the intersection are designated for commercial use and in addition to a large area that's designated for industrial use. Now, so far, and it's been this way now for some time, Casey's, which has been there for quite a long time, and I think one industrial user that's up here toward the north end of this area, are all that's there. There is not a huge demand for commercial uses at this intersection, and everything to the east of the property we're talking about is shown in the comp plan as ag. That's the 2040 comprehensive plan, showing this as agricultural. Now, whether it will be someday residential or other commercial use, nobody knows. But the commercial uses we are targeting are things like storage, contractor offices, vehicle repair services, those kinds of uses that generally can't afford to pay high prices for land, but they need quite a bit of it. And if you look at the way this plat lays out, the street that the staff is proposing we build would be right along this edge and would be abutting the rear yard of those types of uses that are likely to have inventory stored in their rear yard or multiple vehicles stored in their rear yard, equipment for whatever, you know, things like backhoes and caterpillars and so forth, stored in their backyard. So if you have a street, if you had a street there, what would be abutting it would be the rear yard of those kinds of uses. And if that comes, if it eventually becomes residential, that's not a street you want to have as your front door for residential use. It's not even a street you want, really, for the front yard of commercial uses when you have the rear yards of these kinds of general commercial users staring you right across the street. It's much better to bring that street further to the east and bring a street in from Luanne Lane and have double frontage and be able to develop on both sides of it and connect at this point where we are bringing Dershoway Drive over to our east property line. It's very routine in the county to waive block length requirements. It's even fairly routine for commercial uses to waive block length requirements in the city. You can think of multiple commercial areas where block lengths exceed this by double or more. And Tim has a bunch of aerial photos that he's produced to kind of demonstrate this.
The biggest one would be the Twenty-seventh and Cornhusker, where you have Home Depot and the Menards. You have no streets there. You have access. You have easements going through those, but you don't have streets to break up the blocks. That one is a fifty-one acre block. A little bit smaller scale, more modern, is Twenty-seventh and Yankee Hill, the Coles out at Wilderness Hills. That's a sixteen acre block there in the middle. Again, no streets to break it up, but still access and has access routes. And then Home Depot at Seventieth and Highway Two, just up the street from the Bennett Corner. Another instance where it's a twenty acre block. Still has access easements through there. It just depends on how it gets developed through there.
And I think we have one of a residential subdivision in the county as well.
Well, it's a, it's a industrial development.
Oh, excuse me.
Very similar to this. Twenty-fifth and Soltillo, that was just before you, not more than six months ago, where we have a three acre large industrial lots, very similar to what we're proposing here, where you have this street we planned here, but we create a twelve acre block where in this Bennett Corner, we were only proposing an eight acre block. So when you come into commercial developments, residential developments, block length is often a waivable or exceeded ordinance.
And to, full disclosure, most of these that are shown are within the city's jurisdiction. The city's ordinance has a little different provision in it that allows for a waiver or an exception where you have a major street or a stream or some other kind of impediment, like a cemetery or something, that prevents you from having, from meeting that block length. But not all of these, I mean, it's a fairly common thing regardless to have, not all of these have that, have that condition. Some of them could have been broken up. The Twenty-seventh and Yankee Hill is a perfect example of where that block could have been broken up. It doesn't, the block that he was pointing out does not have a major street abutting it. It is back off of the major street, and it's a big interior block that doesn't have streets running through it. This is a, this is a kind of a technical requirement that is primarily useful in maintaining, excuse me, maintaining connectiveness between residential subdivisions so that you don't have to walk a half a mile to get to your neighbor's house that may be just across the backyard. And for commercial use, it really is often waived, and we think it's one that should be waived, even though we don't think it even applies in this case.
Maya?
Can we talk about this measurement?
Sure.
When the first one was taken? Who took it? And the second one that just came in?
Right, right. Let me show you the differences, and that was mainly with meeting with the county engineer and with the planning department. This was our original layout, and really, this road came in and it did this. And the county wanted a little bit more of a stacking distance between the intersection of the highway and the intersection of our street here. And so then, difference mark, yeah, Ben.
I know I have it. There it is.
And so then that was the difference, is we brought that down here to this point. And so that was the packet change of our site plan. And that was at the result of the county engineer's comments, and we agreed with them, and we thought this is a much safer approach in the intersection with the highway.
And that took it to thirteen oh eight?
Thirteen oh eight is what we measured. So just, just under the block length requirement of thirteen-twenty.
And which of the examples that you showed is, of the waivers to block length were in county jurisdiction?
None of those were in the county jurisdiction. They were all within the city of Lincoln. It's hard to find commercial zoning that's been done recently in the county.
All right, thank you.
But it is, it is commonly routine, almost routinely waived in residential subdivisions in the county because of the size of the lots. When you have to have virtually minimum of a three acre lot, it doesn't take very many lots, and building a street for every three or four lots makes no sense at all. I do want to say, before I quit, that we have, if you refer to your memo that was sent out to you on March thirteenth, the conditions of approval that we want to change are three, actually, four separate items. In the condition, the second one on that memo that says amend conditions 1.1.6, the final phrase, "And it may delete the thirty-foot right-of-way along the east lot line of Lot One, Block Two," should be deleted. And then in the drop-down, two paragraphs where it says add new condition, and there are two of them that say add new condition, both of those conditions should be deleted. And on the next page, I think on the second one of those that's designated oh, that's the one that Tom pointed out to you. They had already sent you a memo asking you to delete that condition. So with those amendments, we would be fine with the other conditions of approval. I'm gonna ask you to please make those changes.
You showed us Soltillo Road. Was there a condition that we waived on that one?
Probably not, because that's within the city's jurisdiction, and the city ordinance has language that makes an exception where you have a major street abutting the subdivision.
Yeah, it's a, it's a unique situation where it is actually annexed to the city of Lincoln, but it has, it's maybe a half a mile away from any city services to that end.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Is a lack of, or is, since we didn't have examples of block length waiver in the county, does that mean that there have not been block length waivers in the county for commercial? Or that it's been so long ago that they're hard to find?
I would say no, it's not an indication that there's never been a block length waiver for commercial in the county. I just can't, off the top of my head, think of a significant subdivision that's all commercial that's in the county that's been done anytime recently. I mean, I've done quite a bit of this stuff, and I just don't remember, there aren't a lot of intersections like this that have been developed.
Even when it comes to residential developments, if the property doesn't have access to a public water, like rural water district or a sanitary sewer, we're governed by the health department to have three acre lot sizes. And by the time you get, you know, two or three lots, then you're at that block length right there. So it's a very common... So it's, uh, very commonly waived is that block length.
I, I would say most of the, most of the, um, commercial development that's outside the city of Lincoln or outside the city of Waverly are close enough that they're within the zoning jurisdictions of the city. I mean, thinking of places outside the city limits like Highway 34 and Northwest 48th Street, for example, there's been some commercial development out there, or at least some, some lots have been, uh, prelimplanted out there. I, there just aren't a lot of them.
Okay.
So are you requesting a waiver or are you contesting the fact that the waiver is necessary?
Well, to the extent, to the extent that it could possibly be, uh, necessary, we're asking for the waiver. We think it's unnecessary, but we would ask you to go ahead and delete those conditions because we don't think it applies.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, for both.
All right. Asking and contesting.
If, if it doesn't apply, those conditions shouldn't be in there anyway.
Okay.
Are we done with the applicant?
Thank you.
Right now? Okay. Um, testimony in support of this application? Testimony in opposition? Um, further staff questions?
Yes.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
So can you give us an example of a commercial, a waiver, block length waiver in a commercially zoned area within the county?
No.
Okay.
There's a very, very little commercial zoning in, in the county. And a lot of the commercial zoning in the county are within unincorporated areas. Um, and even those are, are very small, so, um, no.
Okay. And where the county has waived block length in residential areas, can you tell me how different this is from that?
A lot of times the residential areas in the county are done through a community unit plan, which allows, that's what allows you to do three acre lots instead of 20 acre lots under AG development. So your, your density, even though you're on a large, you know, 80 acres or so, you're only limited to a certain number of lots. On 80 acres, it would probably be five lots. You can't then develop the rest of it, although we do most times show that the road for the acreage developments can be extended in the future if rules ever changed in the future. So since you can't develop anything next to it, um, it makes sense to waive the block length in those issues. This is, in my opinion, is, you know, you're not comparing apples to apples. This is a different, um, type of development. This is commercial next to a, next to land that could be developed in the future. Um, it's also, we're trying to keep in mind, although it is outside of Bennett's zoning jurisdiction, it is fairly close to them. And as Bennett grows, this could come in under their, um, jurisdiction. So we're trying to look out, you know, somewhat look, look at what they may do in the future for their, um, their growth, land use. The other issue is, I think if I understood Mr. Hunt's acre correctly, if you measure this along here, it probably meets the block length. But in my opinion, that's not a block length. There's no street here, so how you call that a block length? You build a road over here, then yeah, it's probably less than 1320. Currently, there's a street over here, so if you extended this through without a road, then that block length would exceed 1320. Is it, you know, are we saying, well, basically, yeah, you won't exceed the block length as long as this person builds a, builds a street on their property, then you're under the 1320 block length?
So.
Oh, wait a second.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Ask the question because I'm looking for that other street.
So, so I'm still playing catch up here, Tom. I apologize. So the, the concept here that we're discussing is a requirement for the block length because of something that may happen in the future.
I guess I don't know how you say, maybe this is interpretation of the rule, but I don't know how you say a block length that's less than 1320 feet when there's no street here. It's between cross streets. So to me, the block length today is from here to here and back around.
So you don't account for a future connection in the calculation of the, of the block length? If you, if you're planning out for the future, wouldn't, wouldn't you then anticipate where the connection is going to be and measure from there?
Um, no, not necessarily. I mean, we would have to say, so if there's no street here and then this person comes in, we, we would say, well, you have to put, you have to put a north, this street would continue that Dershoway Drive, and then we would say, you need to put a north-south street in here because of the, because otherwise this exceeds the block length.
Basically.
Block lengths talk about distance between streets. It doesn't say it's a distance to your property line.
But isn't that what you're doing now?
That's why we're requiring, ask, that's why we have a condition to put a street in here.
If you look at it from the reverse, um, I, I guess how I'm looking at it is whoever develops their half section first can push the development of the north-south street off to the next one. So why do we want to reward one and not the other? And so we don't want to push that off onto the next developer. We want it to be equal for all. So we usually require the same standards for each developer.
Well, we don't always do that. We don't necessarily do that when it comes to intersections. Uh, we don't necessarily do that. We, we like to do it when it, when it comes to right of ways, but we don't always do that. Sometimes first to develop gets preference.
I, I, from my experience, it's more the opposite. The first to develop it usually has more, um, conditions put on them to develop. Um, I'm just going to read the definition out of the subdivision ordinance. It says, "No blo-, no block shall be longer than 1320 feet between cross streets." Period. That's all it says.
Tom, can you tell me a little bit more about why the department recommended denial on this waiver?
Well, there's the equity, you know, like I talked about. Let me orient this. I think we could say, I mean, I think we could have put a condition in that said, "Build a, build a, build a 60 foot wide street on your property." We wanted to make it so each owner would have the same amount of cost. Also, um, block length isn't always necessarily just for pedestrian traffic. It's also for vehicular traffic, for more connection to and from different areas. Um, if you didn't have a north-south street at all, and this continues on, you know, if somebody wanted to come down here, they would have to come back and around this way and come down instead of maybe just coming this way. Um, so it adds more connectivity between, between lots. That's what, I mean, and also, um, we don't know what this is going to be today. The intent is, um, I think to market it for certain uses, but there's no guarantee that's what the uses is. Um, I wouldn't be, you know, it, it certainly, um, could be in the future that this comes back in and divides up. I mean, right now, this lot is 8.7 acres. Could very well be, come back in and divide up into multiple lots if they find the markets more for smaller, you know, somebody that doesn't want that big of a lot.
What, what measurement did the, excuse me, the county engineer and planning get the first time?
Um, we would have measured it the, the same way, you know, where, where do you need a street to meet that 1320 block length? And it, it comes out about right here.
So if they, if the measurement we just heard was 1308, well, was the, the original first measurement that made you decide to deny the waiver?
You mean from the previous site plan?
No, just your general, uh, approximation or measurement that's causing you just to deny the waiver? What is that number?
It's, well, I think it goes back to measuring block length. We're, we're saying without a street here, then the block comes over here and well exceeds 1320 feet. I, I don't know what the total measurement is that, but if.
You're mentioning to the next street, so it could be twice the.
Probably twice that. Yeah, I mean, if this is 1320, if you measure over to here, it's going to be well in excess of 1320.
You know, I just, I'm, I'm testing myself here on my simple math and because it's easier for me to manage it on straight lines, I'm looking just at Luann Road. And if the length of the, if the length of the line from, um, the state route to, from the spur to the property line is 597, I don't know what the length of the, of Luann is from the property line to the next road over. I don't, unless I go back and look at the GIS or whatever, I'm not going to find it quickly. So.
Steve Hendrickson of the planning department. Having done a lot of these measurements in the city, maybe I can assist with this discussion. The, and we don't have the measurements, so we, we were given the measurements on the previous one. It exceeded the 1320. You'd have to assume the lot is on adjacent property. Part of the issue here is that if the, the only way it could be less than 1320 is this street would have to be immediately on adjacent property. So what you're saying to the adjacent developer is you'll have to put in a street. You will only get the, the benefit of that street on one side. You will put in the street actually for the other developer because again, we're trying to, this, this really is a discussion of near term versus long term.
Right.
In the long term, this could be part of Bennett. Um, the one thing that having been here for 28 years, I hear a lot of people say, why did the city in the seventies approve all these acreages at the edge of the city? Now we're annexing these acreages. What short sighted thought that was to decide, well, this will never be part of the city, so you'll approve these acreages. So to us, to have the short term thinking of, well, this is just going to be self-storage and that'll all it'll be for the next 50 years, we try to look out in the long term. This is not in Bennett's zoning jurisdiction right now. It's shown as agricultural to the east, but we're trying to think long term. It could be commercial to the east. It could be self-storage for 15 or 20 years to be replaced by a much higher intensity commercial use because it is a long highway too. Someday you'll have a south beltway, you'll have an east beltway. This would be rather close to that jurisdiction. So we think having that interconnectedness makes sense in the long term. And we were really trying to be flexible here to say, well, rather than putting it all on this developer, and they having the exact same problem of the whole street is on them and they only get to use of it on one side by splitting the baby down the middle, um, each of them would have some responsibility. We weren't trying to require them to post the bond for it right away if they don't have it, a buyer for the south side. And again, because they could potentially do a community sewer system, you could potentially have smaller than three acre lots here in the future. We were trying to provide that flexibility because it's a, rather than putting the entire street on the property to the east and all of the impact going there, because that's what the 1320 would have, if it's 1304, if you assume the street is right on the adjacent property, you might be able to show that it is just slightly less than 1320. We don't have that information in front of us. But again, it's just, we were trying to look out in the long term in terms of providing vehicular circulation here that you'd have the ability to go down to Luann. You wouldn't have just really the one way in and out. Or conversely, showing that the road would have to be entirely on the adjacent property. Again, that would also, if it's on adjacent property, it would make the property of the west have a front yard setback to it. And maybe it had been developed with a rear yard setback there. So it, it's difficult to know because this property could develop into multiple small lots if you start to see, hey, Bennett is growing, which, which it is modestly compared to perhaps the city of Lincoln in terms of the number of units. But as it grows, yes, maybe there's an interest in a fast food restaurant here and something more intensive than what they're finding initial interest in, which might be self-storage and warehouse, which may be the near term interest versus the long term.
Playing devil's advocate, aren't we though, asking them to kind of pay for a road to nowhere?
It'll connect to Luann Lane and so that it provides access for the long term. It provides a second way in and out of the development in the near term as well. So no, I, I don't think it goes anywhere. It would go to Luann Lane, which is another public street, which would go back out to the, the highway or would provide access further to the east. Again, it's, when you're trying to look in the long term, it would provide access to, to development in the long term and it provides access to a public street in the near term. We'd have lots of developers who, when we stub a street into the adjacent road, could say, that goes into a farm, it goes nowhere. Well, there's no trips coming from it. Well, it goes into the next land, which when it develops, then you continue that road along.
But that road would not have to be built until they did a final, or would not have to be planned for until they did a final plat of that section.
By splitting it down the middle, we were trying to give some, some flexibility in, in terms of how it would develop.
What, do you know what Bennett's block length limit is?
Uh, no, we, we don't have that in, on hand.
That was my question as well, looking long term, wanting to develop this with the idea that it might be incorporated into the planning district or of Bennett.
I could guess, I could guess it's 1320 because it's a very common standard in a lot of subdivision ordinances and in many communities, you use a standard of a, of another community. Um, our standard in the city used to be near this. We've actually recently amended it to try to make it more clear because cross street sometimes is a, is a nebulous term. So we've now said, you go all the way around and divide by two, and we've explained what happens when you have a cul-de-sac and some other circumstances as well. Um, and I can say, um, I, I agree with Mark Hunsaker on, I couldn't immediately think of any other, in the county's zoning jurisdiction, a commercial or industrial, because for the reasons Tom said, we just really don't have a lot of large commercial industrial properties. Um, the property Catty Corner to the northwest, we actually have a requirement of their future development to show us a plumery plat before they go forward because they just have one little building there today. So that's another one that could possibly come forward with a plumery plat in the future, but they haven't done one recently.
So we're charting new territory, basically.
To some degree, yes.
More questions for staff? You ready for the applicant rebuttal? Okay, applicant.
Well, I think Tom had this much right. This is not a block. And I don't know how you apply a block length standard to something that's not a block. But beyond that, what you are proposing is, I mean, Tom's, Tom's comment to the effect that we, we do this all the time in, in residential in the county under community unit plans is true, but the fact that it, they're under community unit plans is irrelevant. Community unit. Community unit plan is a zoning term. It's a special permit under the zoning ordinance. We're dealing with the subdivision ordinance here. And, and the block length requirement is in the subdivision ordinance. So the waiver of the block length requirement in a community unit plan is a waiver of the subdivision requirements, not, not a zoning term. This parcel, this lot has street access here and here, and it has street frontage here. It will have front yard requirements on every one of those frontages. To require it to then create a new street here and pick up yet another front yard requirement, so that it has a front yard on all four sides of it, is just unfair. It eats up a lot of valuable land. In the event that this parcel is subdivided into smaller parcels, and Steve's right, it could be with a, with a, uh, community sewer system, maybe divided into smaller than three acre lots. But there's a condition in this report, which we have not objected to, that says, if we do that, we have to build a, a north-south street, which would probably end up being something like this. And we're not opposed to that, but we think we're gonna have one big lot here, and it's unfair to have a requirement that we have a front yard on all four sides of it, just because nobody knows what this is gonna be out here. And to try and measure over to the next road and say, that's a block? It's not a block, there's no street there, it's just a stub that ends right here. The block doesn't, there isn't a block here. And so, and, and finally, and this is really important from my client's perspective, to have to grade and bond for the construction of a half-street here is a pretty expensive proposition. And probably, very likely, will kill this deal. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just, it's just not fair to have to, to put up a cash escrow for the cost of a street that may never get built. And nobody has any idea that it would or might get built. In my opinion, this ground over here is more likely to be residential than it is to be commercial. When you see what, how much commercial has already been approved around this major intersection, it seems to me it's way more likely to be residential than commercial. Because the commercial demand at this point is pretty weak in turn, based on what you've seen built out here. And so we're here trying to, trying to do something that is, is catering to uses that need more land, but can't afford to be buying commercially zoned land in the city. And it's, it's, you know, again, if you, if you require that front yard along there, regardless, these, these businesses that will be here are gonna face Highway forty-three, and their backyard with their equipment storage and inventory storage and whatever else may be back there is gonna be backed up to that lot line.
So I'm confused, Mark. Do you have, um, a tenant that, or a prospective deal that's gonna go in on this property right now?
Um, I think the, probably the best prospect right now is for this property up in here, and that'll be, that'll be storage.
Is this your major sticking point?
This is the only sticking point.
The only one, okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm, here's, here's my confusion. If you don't have, um, a tenant or whatever you wanna call it right now for that lower half, the, the property owner does not have to put forth a surety bond until that final plat is made. So at that time, when that happens, whether it's gonna be one whole tenant or if it's gonna be, you know, three or four or whatever, then you'll know if you need that road. And then, then that, that's all will happen at that same time.
What will happen is, when we, when we do a final plat here, we will be bound by the conditions that attach to the preliminary plat. We have to do a final plat in accordance with the preliminary plat. In order to do, as you suggest, maybe ask for a waiver at, at some point in the future, we'd have to come back here and re, and redo this prelim plat and ask for it all over again. And I, I really just think it's, it's, um, it's a misapplication of the, of the requirement. And it's unfair to this developer to have to post a bond for a street that nobody knows will ever get built. I mean, if we were on the edge of Lincoln, and we knew that that, that this area to the east was sewerable and within the comprehensive plan for, for development in the, in the planning period, sure, that makes sense. But here, uh, it doesn't make sense.
Could you summarize, and maybe Tim, this is a better question for you, the distances? So from edge to edge to edge to edge, if you don't mind?
I'm gonna use this map here. So what we measured at thirteen oh eight, so if we were at thirteen twenty, we'd be, you know, about another six more feet beyond the property line, and that's where that next street would be to connect to the future Dershoway Drive extension to Luann. And I think what I was trying to iterate before is oftentimes in the county and in commercial developments, a block length of thirteen twenty is not adhered to anyway. So even trying to follow a block length of thirteen twenty in a commercial development is not followed regardless. So trying to follow a thirteen twenty block length is, is what my point was with all those, showing all those other commercial developments where we think maybe, if this does turn into a residential or any other development, then that, that street could be here. And then there might be backyards of this lot facing the backyards of what we are proposing, of this is the backyard of our lot, this would be the backyard. So backyards are facing each other. So with the street here, it may be more like a fourteen hundred block length or fifteen hundred. But that's what you, you sometimes often see is a two thousand foot block length in commercial developments. They're often separated by access easements, um, but they're not bounded by streets.
Thank you.
And that's, that's, the point of showing all the other examples is that it's, it's just not very practical when it comes to a commercial setting for, for a commercial project to adhere strictly to that thirteen twenty block length. And especially in an area like this, where you're likely to have three acre lots minimum, so that they can have their own, uh, individual sewage disposal. We have real water, but we're not gonna have a, we're not gonna have a sewer out there for a very long time. Certainly not within the, any, any timeframe that any of us are gonna care about.
So, so as proposed with the requirement of the block length, the developer really isn't supportive of this or would not want it to get approved?
Well, I, I mean, we, we want the plat to be approved. We want the plat to be approved without that requirement. I mean, it, it, it may very well kill the project if we have to, if we have to do that.
I had a question on timing. How long do you think it'll be before they would come forward with a final plat on the southern end of the property?
Very quickly, I think. I mean, I think the plan is to, to get the final plat approved very quickly so that it's marketable.
So on the entire property?
Well, it's, there's not much point in only doing one lot when you've got only three lots. So yeah, we, we have to get a separate lot for Casey's, because we're buying all the rest of it from Casey's. So we have to have a separate lot for them to keep, and there's no, no reason not to go ahead and do the other two.
Let me ask, because I think Tom covered this while I was playing catch-up. Comp plan for the abutting land says that its use will be-
Ag.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, um, I forgot to ask staff how they felt about the amendments that Mr. Hunsaker suggested before.
You can bring them back up afterwards.
Okay, Tom, can you talk to those really quick? Mr. Hunsaker wanted to delete some of the conditions, like one point one, point six. How, how does staff feel about that?
Well, we're against it. I mean, he wants, he's asking to delete any conditions that have to do with putting in that street and block length.
Okay.
So we would be against deleting any of those conditions. Well, except for the, yeah, the traffic study one.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Applicant, do you have any other rebuttal for that question? No, okay. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion.
When we get it started, I'll move approval, subject to the amendment, as the applicant had stated.
I would second.
Then again.
Can we go through exactly what that was? So you mean these here?
Yeah.
Okay, so he, Mr. Hunsaker suggested deleting one point one, point six. The last part where it says, and may delete the thirty-foot right-of-way. There were two new conditions that were added that he wanted deleted. So those kind of three things there.
And then there was also, uh, the traffic study, which we mentioned, yeah.
But staff is good with that.
And, and the new conditions were-
And approving the waiver.
One point-
One eight?
Hold on a second.
I wanna, I wanna see the, I want the numbers to be read so that I know I'm in alignment.
And I wanna make sure I understand your-
Yeah.
Right.
All of the underlined except for that. Just leave the, leave, leave the second sentence.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
So on condition, well, I wanna let you go ahead and say it, Mark, since it's your-
Tom's pointing out that I made a mistake. The, the amendment to condition one point one, point six would be to delete everything except the, well, to delete the entire first sentence that's underlined, and then at the end, delete, and it may delete the thirty-foot right-of-way along the east lot line of Lot one, Lot two.
Okay, so you only want to retain the phrase, add a note that if Lot one, Block two is subdivided into three or more lots, the preliminary plat will be revised to provide a street connection from Dershoway Drive to Luann main, period.
That's correct, we, we agree to that.
That's what you'd like to retain.
That's the only amendment?
That's the only change.
Change. Okay, and that's a-
And then, are we, are we talking about one point one, point eight and nine as well?
Strike.
Striking.
Yes.
Yes, it would be, the new conditions that are, were proposed in that staff memo would be one point one, point eight and one point one, point nine. But they're not listed in the conditions of the staff report, because they are new.
So it's on that memo?
It's on the memo, yes.
It's the March thirteenth memo?
Mm-hmm.
It's, I'm referring to, because you, in your memo said to add new conditions. An escrow will be provided at the time.
Okay, we didn't have, I don't have the numbers on.
I'm looking at the March thirteenth memo, and it doesn't say anything about one point one, point eight or one point one, point nine.
No, it doesn't, but if they were added in, that's what the numbers would be.
Can, can we work from- I think there was a revised memo that came out. I'm looking at it, and those two are on there.
What is the most accurate?
Tracy, can we work from this document instead?
I don't have anything, alls I have is this, so.
Oh, just, so this is the conditions of approval on the staff report.
But those have changed, because there was a memo that came out on March thirteenth.
The latest staff report's not current.
Right.
Latest staff report.
The last staff report, the most current is March thirteen.
It's this one. Okay, I'm thoroughly confused.
Steve Hendrickson of the Planning Department. If the-
I've scribbled.
Let me just say, if the basic idea is that Mr. Hunsaker's agreed if three or more lots, they put in the street, if it's the block, if you're agreeing to do the block length waiver, stated as such, we'll make sure that the conditions accurately reflect what your intent is. We'll go over with Mark to make sure it's, that, that way you don't have to have, completely perfect today.
What happened is there, there were two memos dated March thirteenth. And the second one numbers those conditions that were previously not numbered. And so, I, yeah, we wanna take out one point one, point eight and one point one, point nine.
Yeah, I got rid of the one that wasn't-
Everyone's in-
Right, they'll work it out.
Yes. A note to ourselves that when memos come out on the same day, they should be date stamped, I mean, time stamped, so that we, we know what version we're looking at.
Tom, are you clear on all this?
Yes, I'm clear.
So can you make your-
So I'm, I'll take a friendly amendment to the motion to accept it as was stated here.
As the applicant-
As the applicant had stated, and the Planning Department had understood.
And that's my second.
Discussion.
Um, I'm gonna support the motion. I think, um, I appreciate the fact that there are the issues that we're, we're trying to look forward as far as block length. But I just practically speaking, look at this and think that it probably makes sense at this point to, um, to get the development going and to, uh, get something there. I'm, I'm supportive of, of waiving that.
And, and I seconded it, because I believe that we are in kind of new turf here. And, um, we're gonna be unfair somewhere, it seems like. And I just, I think right now that, um, Mr. Hunsaker, I hate to say this, but you made a good case for your, your position. It, it burns me for that.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm gonna support it without comment. Yeah, watch those, jury. Uh, just to note that, um, I really appreciate, um, staff and the applicant, um, working through this, even though it was a little bit like sausage making, as we all got a little confused. But, uh, I think that getting development started makes a lot of sense. And right now, with the length of block that we, all the different lengths of block that we have walked out, all the scenarios, I believe, like, we're not actually making a huge sacrifice to the future by not requiring a street right now. And the fact that you've agreed to a condition to add an additional street, should you subdivide further, um, gives me confidence that we won't be creating an, an ugly development here.
I too will support the, the motion. But, but I am a little torn after I've played catch-up. So thank you for, for, um, for, um, being kind to me as I asked some, some interesting questions there. But, um, I'm not convinced at this point in time that, um, we need to, uh, be conscientious of, uh, the road connection. I, 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 I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments, Maya?
I'm a little bit torn as well. I'm kind of torn between the, um, sort of orderly growth and equitability that, that planning, um, laid out as a, an argument, and then the flexibility promise of the comp plan. And, um, I, I still wanna commend planning for their position, because I think it's, it's the appropriate position for planning to be visionary and, and strive for the, the best possible over all kind of bird's eye view picture. But I, I'm gonna default to the flexibility argument, because, um, it, it could potentially have a, a bit of a catalyst effect on, on this development. So I will support it.
Jury, call vote, please.
Okay, this is for conditional approval, as amended as requested by the applicant, for county- for County Preliminary Plat one eight zero zero one. Again, this is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the County Board within fourteen days. Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, we're adjourned.